Good evening. I'm Lincoln Anabali, the president of Natick High School's Politics Club. Myself, along with my fellow club officers Connor Flynn, Nate Lord, and Hayden Brown, are joined by the three candidates running for school committee. Matthew Brand, who has served on the committee for one term. Shai Fuchsman, who has also served on the committee for one term. And Catherine Brunel, who is running for her first term. The school committee election will be held on March 30th, 2021. You can find out more information about the election in the link in the description, or by scanning the QR code here. The moderators will be asked a series of questions. Each candidate has a maximum of two minutes to answer, but do not have to use the entire time. Questions have been collected from students, teachers, and members of the community. Two students from Politics Club, Ben Sharwienor and Max Friedman, will also have the opportunity to ask the candidates their own questions.
Yeah, so thrilled to have you guys here. Our student forums are something that we love to do at our school. And it's finally great to have you three here. So we're very excited for a great night. And I think we should begin, so let's go.
Great, so the first question will be for Mrs. Brunel. And it's what motivated you to personally run for school committee? And what separates you from the rest? And the other two candidates will have an opportunity to answer this as well.
Thank you so much. And I want to say that I think it's wonderful for us to end our forums. Matt and Shai and I have done about four forums. This is our fourth one. And so to end here with you as the students actually feels apropos. And I'm just honored to be here and grateful to you all for taking such an interest in this. You know, so your question was, you know, why am I, what motivates me? And coming into a school committee, or the desire to come to a school committee, is a full circle moment for me. I'm a former elementary school teacher. I have worked at Boston College, supporting students after high school. I'm a parent of five kids in the district. And I've watched closely the school committee and the finance committee meetings over the last year because of the budget crisis that we were in, our schools and town were in. So this is a moment where I feel like I can. I had a college professor that used to talk about finding the intersection of what the world needs and where your greatest joy is. My joy is in learning and students. Many of you know that I'm a coach. I've coached some, even some of the students here at the high school. So just developing and learning and being part of a community has always been a joy of mine. And I think that's intersecting with where, something that we, a need that we have now in Natick. And that is relational and community leaders, who are willing to use organizational skills, best practices, and a desire to lead with data. And you know, that's, that's, that's why I'm entering. I think what separates me most obvious is that I am not an incumbent, but I am a challenger in this race. And you might hear tonight that we need to keep the status quo. And I reject that. I think that in a moment of crisis, there's always an opportunity. And indeed, our world has been through a crisis quite a few in the last year. And so I'm stepping in, stepping up. And I'd like to be considered for one of the two votes that you have on this March 30th election.
Great, thank you. Next, Mr. Brand.
Thank you. This was three years ago when I first ran this forum, which we got to do in the high school auditorium, was my favorite. It was really a great opportunity to get to talk to students. When I, when I ran three years ago, it was not the first thing that I had done in town government. When my family and I, I have two daughters who are in sixth and seventh grade at Kennedy. When we moved to Natick, my family and I, I knew that I needed to get involved some way or another in the community where my daughters were growing up, right? Like I, I feel like it is my obligation. We all make different choices on how we give back to our community. But my professional skills, I thought, would lend themselves really well to working in town government. And it was a way to show my daughters, be a model for them of how to give back to the community that you live in. And in my professional life, I'm a, I was just minutes ago, I had to leave early, in a, in a meeting, I'm an associate director of engineering at Wayfair. But aside from being a software engineer and a longtime startup technologist, I've also been a summer camp director. And my time at summer camp, I started as a camper there, went on to be a counselor and an administrator and so forth, until I became a director. It happens to be where I met my wife. Each step of the way, I got an opportunity to help and contribute to the environment for more and more kids at camp. And that to me, my technical skills, my communication skills, all of those types of things, not only differentiate myself in there, particularly the technology thing and the entrepreneurial thing, but the leadership part, all of those things contribute to what I believe makes me a good school committee candidate. And there's, it's sort of a unique mix of being a pretty nerdy software engineer guy, but also like a fun-loving summer camp, like hang out and play kickball. And I can kick the ball with either foot really well, by the way, which is an extra special skill. I know, you can, you can put that on my Wikipedia someday. So those skills all together, I think, make me want to continue to do the hard work that we've all been doing together. Thank you.
And Mr. Fuchsman, please go ahead.
Sure, thank you. So again, I just wanted to add to what the previous candidates say, to thank you all for having us. It's so exciting really to see young people involved and to care about our local elections. So thank you for having us. So for me, education, my passion for education began in college. I took a course called Education for Social Change. And I fell in love with this idea that education is a force to, to make positive changes in society. In fact, I'm originally from Israel and I, I did my dissertation at Harvard. I got my doctorate in education by going to Israel and interviewing high school students in 10th grade to learn about how they make sense of the Israeli Palestinian conflict. So for me, education is something that I've been working on for the past, for my entire adult life. I have over 20 years of experience, besides my doctorate, 20 years of experience conducting research and applying research to improve educational practice and policy. What I do for a living is I work with school districts and state departments of education across the country, including the Massachusetts Department of Education, to help schools implement evidence-based social and emotional learning programs and mental health support systems. So just today, virtually, because of the pandemic, I was in Indiana and I was in West Virginia and I was in Tennessee, working with districts there. So that's one of the reasons I'm running for school committee, is because I love not only providing my expertise to educators across the country, but learning from them, learning best practices, learning innovative solutions. And it's been an honor for the past two years or so. I haven't served my full term because I was appointed halfway someone else's term. But I had the honor to bring my expertise and everything that I'm learning from across the country to improve our schools right here in Natick. The other thing that motivated me to run for school committee is I have a daughter. I have two kids, freshmen in high school and a daughter in elementary school, who have special needs. And I really got involved with, with Natick's schools through CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, to advocate for better special education for my daughter. And since then, I've made it a priority on school committee, and I will continue to make a priority, to fight for equity and inclusion. That means that every student should get what they need to be successful, however success is defined for each of you. And for inclusion, that every single one of you should feel welcomed and supported in the school regardless of who you are, regardless of your identity. Those are two of the things that I care about a lot. One thing that differentiates you, differentiates me from my, my fellow candidates is the fact that I did not grow up here. In fact, I grew up in three different countries, none of which were the US. Israel, Mexico, and Venezuela, I speak two languages, three languages, Spanish, Hebrew, and English. And you know, you might see my sign. If you thought it was hard for Obama to run for president with a funny name like Hussein and Obama, try running for school committee with Shai and Fuchsman, you know? So that's the other thing that differentiates me. And again, I look forward to, for this conversation.
All right, for the next question, you guys are running to be a representative of a school system with over 5,500 students, right? How will you balance the priorities of your children and your interests with the priorities of the rest of the schools? And for the incumbents, what challenges have you encountered in balancing your priorities as a parent and a community member with your job on the school board? Shai, will you answer first?
Sure. So that is one of the first things that you have to learn while on school committee, is that you're really there to represent entire community. And that begins by having an understanding of how town government works, not only school committee, but school committee is part of the larger ecosystem of governments. Understanding how government works, but also understanding the, the key principle of democracy, which as simple as it is, is more challenging when you're actually in a position of leader, which is how do you make a sense of the different priorities and values of an entire community? And how do you incorporate that into your decision-making at every single step of the way? And you know, as a parent, you know, you have, you know, I have the experience of my own students who are going to school. You know, two kids, two very different children, two different journeys. But that's just a perspective. That's just a, an understanding that I have. But I know that I need to bring every single perspective. And not only of parents and not only of students, but really entire community. Every resident in Natick gets to vote for school committee. We represent everyone, even if you don't have a child in the system. And so making sure that we're really engaging with every segment of the population has been something that I've really been focused on doing and really getting, finding ways to connect with every aspect, every segment of the population to really understand what is it that we're trying to do as one community? And where do the school systems fit into the larger vision of Natick as a community? And what can I do to push that forward? Now, obviously, being a leader also means sometimes making difficult decisions. And I know that we've been, you know, as incumbent, you get, you're going to be criticized for some decisions or, you know, some, what you said or you didn't say. But that's leadership, right? Sometimes you have to say things or do things or not say things, even when they don't make you popular, because ultimately you know and you work hard to make sure that you are always thinking about the wellbeing of the community as a whole. And that's been a learning process for me, one that I have embraced and one that I'm, I'll continue to do if I'm reelected.
The same question I'll pose to the other incumbent, Mr. Brand.
Thank you. It's a great question and something that I spent a lot of time thinking about when, before, you know, before I ran. I think one of the things that really helps me here is the software engineering background that I have. And in many ways, my professional life is very analytical and zeros and ones and non-emotional, right? There is a, so I can look at a problem, zoom way out. I talk a lot about understanding the forest and the trees, right? You have to be able to zoom out and see the big picture and then zoom in and really understand the, the trees part as well. I use the information that I, that I get from my daughters as one data point, or two data points in my daughter's case. They're very close in age, but they, they, while they've been at the same schools, except for when they're in gap years between fourth grade and fifth grade, they have very different experiences. So I collect their experiences. And I would be lying if I said that there have been times when they've come home and they've not had a good experience, or they are having a hard time with their math homework or something like that. And my first instinct would be, well, you know, what can I do about this, you know? But I don't, that's part of the job. You do have to be able to look at the big picture all the time. And I'm fortunate to have a situation where I have close access to some data points. And my friends and their kids and all of, there are lots of different things that we have to collect data from. But like Dr. Fuchsman said, we also serve people who don't have students in the district, right? We have to consider all perspectives all the time for every decision. When we were vetting Dr. Nolan to be hired as a superintendent, one of the things that I said three, almost three years ago now, in a public meeting was, if every single, we did surveys, we, we had all kinds of community outings to get feedback from people about Dr. Nolan, about lots of different things. And one of the things I said back then was, if everybody in the community loves her, if it's 100% positive, then she's probably doing something wrong. We can't possibly agree with everybody all the time. I have no problem with people disagreeing with me. I believe we make a better decision when we disagree with each other respectfully. And so the more feedback we collect, the more people we meet, the more people we speak with, the more perspectives we gather, the better decisions we'll make together. Thanks. It's a great question.
Thank you. And Catherine Brunel, Ms. Brunel, how would you, as someone who has five children in the district, how would you balance your abilities as a parent along with considering the needs of the entire district?
Thank you for the question, and I'd like to answer this in three ways. And they all align back to my platform. The very first thing is with best practices. A school committee member needs to continue to educate themselves and to train and to always be using things, you know, that are best practices across the country that are known. And that's when you're, as a school committee member, you almost always have that school committee hat on in, when you're serving. Even if I'm sitting at the, at the sidelines of a soccer game or I am picking somebody up from the schools, people are always going to see me as a school committee member. And so I have to understand that when I interact with people, I have to use discretion and I have to use my best judgment. Now, while if I am speaking to people and understanding other people's needs, right? I've always been someone that looked far beyond my, my inner circle. That's just naturally who I am. It's why I've been a coach, it's why I've been a teacher. I've never just taken care of the tiny people in front of me. And so as a, as a district, if we look at the whole district, those best practices also are about a chain of command. And our teachers and our staff at the schools are the very first level in the chain of command. So I would always refer people back to their teachers and to their staff members. Have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked, if that hasn't gone well, have you talked to the principal? Those kinds of things need to be in place. And then secondly, this piece about data, it's great to hear the incumbents talk about data. And I think that we need to hear more from our school committee about data, specifically because of this question, so that we know that it's not just one, one person's child why we're making a decision, but instead we're relying on the data points that are not just known to the school committee, but the ones that can be known are also made public. I've said before that, you know, we talked about equity. I heard someone mention equity before. You cannot have equity in a district if you do not have data. So I would like to be able to sleep at night because I'm able to back up any decision with data and with a lot of listening. And finally, I have been a town meeting member for, for a year now. I've also been a Johnson Council member for over two years. And so I have served in these roles where I have to take a lot of people's understanding, their priorities, and I've had to come to a place where in town meeting, I have to make a vote. And in Johnson Council, I have to think about the entire school. So these are things that I have done before and I am absolutely willing to do for our entire district.
Um, our next question is, what is your plan to help underprivileged students within the Natick Public Schools? Many students are struggling right now to make ends meet due to the COVID-19 pandemic. How will you ensure that the school district provides necessary resources for these students? Will you continue the completely free lunch program that the high school has implemented? This helps students not feel singled out. I will direct this first to Mr. Brand.
Thank you. Good and important question. Certainly, this goes back to the equity thing that we were talking about before. We want to make sure that every student feels safe to come to school, has the ability to be successful, whatever their version of successful is. And we need to do everything that we can to provide those supports. As we all struggle in the past year here from COVID-19, everybody. And as we are in the midst right now of discussions about how we're going to get back to full-time, a full return to school for everybody, we have to consider the students that have a harder go. A lot of people have lost jobs. A lot of parents have lost jobs over the last year. And I consider myself to be very fortunate and privileged to be in a situation where that hasn't happened. I work for a company that allows me to work from home, my wife as well. We're in, we're in a good spot there. Not everybody is. As we move into the next year, we have to make sure through grant money, through the budget appropriations that we get from the town, through ways that we generate money, to make sure that we provide services, not just now, right? A lot of these problems are very acute right now. It's very clear to see who needs free lunch or who needs help in other ways. But once we start to get back to a normal routine in America and in the world, it's going to be very important to continue to survey people, to communicate, to check in with our counselors and our teachers and our parents and our students themselves, and make sure that everybody continues to do okay and make sure that people continue to get the things that they need to be successful, including free lunch. Anything we need to do, we have to do it. We have to figure out a way to do that always. And that doesn't stop in, on April 28th, when theoretically, or April 26th, when we theoretically start going back to school full-time, or in September. It's going to take a while for us to recover. And there's a whole other thing about academic recovery, but the emotional health and the social health of our students and the wellbeing. We all have different family situations at home. And it's really important that we keep our fingers on the pulse of how everyone is doing individually regularly to make sure that we can provide the services they need. Thanks.
Thank you. Now I will direct the question to Dr. Fuchsman.
Thanks. So first of all, as a local district, we interact with the state Department of Education, the federal Department of Education and the federal government. And there's a lot of grants and funding that we receive as a school district in order to invest in students, in particular, including low-income students. So the Free and Reduced Lunch Program is actually a federal program that all schools across the country receive. In addition, there's also Title I funding that Natick receives along with every district in the country, based on a formula of how many low-income students we have. And there's also McKinney-Vento, which is a specific program to support homeless students. So there's a lot of federal and state grants that we can apply to and that we have applied to and we have currently in place that are coming into the district that allow us to support students. That is also along with funding for ELL students, English language learners, for special education. So all these different funding streams are important for us to be aware of and to figure out how do we make the best investments of these dollars that are coming from the federal and the state governments in order to make sure we're supporting all of our students. But there's another piece to this. Whether you're low income, whether you have special needs, whether you're an ELL student, or whether you're just a student, there's, with the pandemic in particular, there's mental health issues that a lot, I think a lot of people are struggling with. The social isolation, the lack of routine, you know, because we're not in, in school, has been really hard. And we know from national data and our own local data that this is, that the students are struggling. And we know that adults are struggling too, by the way. And so one of the things that I, one of the areas of expertise that I bring is the understanding of how as a system, as a district, we put in place the trainings and the processes to identify who are the students who are struggling, how are they struggling, and how do we support them in a way that's confidential and that is supportive? So for example, you know, we have ways to screen students. You probably, you might, many of you probably participated in HEY-Natick, which is a screening process for mental health issues, which is done confidentiality, kind of confidential, in a confidential way. And that information, you have to make sure that not only you're screening students, but you're, but when a student is identified, they're provided with a right referral to the right system and the right process and the right individual counselor who can support the students. And we need to make sure that we have those processes. So no student, regardless of why, that no one falls through the cracks. Again, this is the kinds of systems that I help state departments of education and school districts to do. I've worked really closely with Dr. Nolan and her team to make sure that we have these processes in place. There's best practices, there's research that, there's data. I know we like talking about, all three of us like talking about data. There's data behind what works and what doesn't work. We need to make sure that we also have data-driven decision-making processes. We're going to upgrade our Zoom. Great, we got it. So we, you know, we need to make sure that we have all of that in place and that we're really making sure that every single student is supported. The other thing that we need to make sure is that we create a health and safe environment. So if you're LGBTQ student, if you're a student of color, if you have special needs, that you come to school and when you're walking down the hallway, when you're walking down the classroom, when you're, when you're in the cafeteria, you feel safe and you feel comfortable, you feel like you belong to this place. I've heard from students that that's not always the case. I don't believe in this type of school, by the way. I think there's a lot of work we need to do, and I'm ready to do that work, to make sure that we figure out what is, who are the students who are struggling? Where are we not, who are the students that, that don't feel safe in the school? And what can we do to train teachers, to train students, to train all of us to make sure we're creating inclusive environments where everyone feels welcome and everyone feels safe?
Okay, thank you. Lastly, I'm going to direct the question to Ms. Brunel.
Okay, thank you. And I have two minutes, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the most important thing that sticks out to me about that question is the phrase, "so that we're not singled out." And that's, that's where I would like to take this question. Because I think especially at the high school, there is a strong level of norms of what a Natick high school student looks like, sounds like, how they act, the things that they do. And so I think that anytime that you are in any sort of different group, whether it's socioeconomic, or race, or gender, or sexual orientation, there is a potential that you are going to feel singled out in no matter what. And I think that that is where we go back to creating meaningful, sorry, creating policy with meaningful community involvement. When we create policies in our school, for example, the microaggression policy that's right, that we have out right now, we need to start with the community. We don't need to start with three white school committee members and an administrator. We need to start with the entire community around policies that then protect people who are in different groups and who may in fact feel underprivileged for a huge variety of reasons. I have been disappointed with the lack of community involvement in real ways for our policymaking board. And it's something that I would absolutely prioritize. The other thing, you know, I have this ABC, so that's the C of my, of my ABCs. The A is aligning our budget with our priorities, because we do have a finite amount of money. So as Dr. Fuchsman said, that, you know, our free lunch, free and reduced lunch program is a federal program. It's been around for decades. It was in the schools that I taught in Chicago and Boston. So that will always continue. But this idea that we were able to offer free lunch to everyone, so then anyone could just walk up and take a paper bag, you know, a lunch bag, meant that nobody was singled out. You didn't, you weren't acknowledged. It wasn't clear to your, the other students that you were on a free and reduced lunch. I know that we can do that better in our schools always. But there, we just have to make sure that our budgets are aligned to our priorities so that we don't, we know where the money is and we know exactly how we want to spend it, so that the things that come, that don't affect everybody, right? But that are essential because they affect a really important population that we want to care for, that they don't get left out or they don't get left to just federal funding, but that we in Natick are supporting every student with our entire budget.
Thank you. Our next question is, how will you help teachers and students to manage the stress of returning to the building? What will you do to ease the transition and concerns that accompany this switch? I will first start this question to Dr. Fuchsman.
So I hate to be repetitive, but this is exactly what I do for a living. In fact, just a couple of months ago, I delivered a training to over 120 superintendents, including Dr. Nolan, across the Commonwealth to help superintendents and school principals best understand how to support adults. Because the one thing that we've learned through the pandemic, although it was probably true before, is that not only are students stressed and overwhelmed, so are teachers. And the pandemic has made only, that only harder. And you know, there's that saying, when you go into the airplane, and I know none of us have been airplanes for a while, but when you go on the airplane, they always tell you, put your gas, your oxygen mask on first before you help others. That's the attitude that teachers need to have too. Like you have to care for yourself and your own stress before you're able to support students. Because if you are stressed, in fact, there's research to show that when a, when a teacher walks into the classroom anxious, their students don't do well. So we need to make sure that we are supporting students. And I love the fact that you asked me about teachers and not only students. And so I think that's important, that we focus on the teacher wellbeing as well as student wellbeing. The way to do it, and you know, again, I've done trainings on this, so I now only have two minutes now, but it's basically to promote self-care, relational care, and create safe environment, work environments for teachers. That's on the teacher side. On the student side, similar strategies by the student level. What we do, what I do for, in my work, is help build these multi-tiered approach to social, emotional, and mental health, where we make sure every student gets the social and emotional learning programs and practices. So you're building your stress management, management skills, your relationship skills, your, your goal-setting skills, so that you're able to deal with stress better. But at the same time, that we're having processes to identify those students who are struggling, who need additional supports, in tier two or tier three support. So tier two is usually small group support. Tier three is for students who are really struggling to have the individual, individualized support. So the idea of a multi-tiered approach is that we help all students while the same, but you know, we help all students, but we also make sure that those who need additional supports get those additional supports as well. Because the reality is, when you all come back to school, you're going to have a range of experiences. Some of you are going to be, you know, going to be so happy to be in and you know, it's going to be like you've never left. And others, others of you might be struggling. And so we really need to make sure we have that, have individualized supports for those who need additional social, emotional, and mental health supports. And thank you for that question. I think it's a really important one.
Thank you. Next, I will direct the question to Mr. Brand.
Thanks. And if I could just use Dr. Fuchsman's answer, and he is what he does for a living, I'll just repeat what he said. I also work as a technical advisor for a new company that deals with teletherapy, mental health for college students. Each student that signs up puts in optionally the reasons why they're there, the reasons why they are seeking mental, like, mental health and therapy. Almost, it's around, depending on what university it is that's currently a client, somewhere between 65 and 80% of all of the students who sign up check off stress and anxiety as reasons why they're there. And a startlingly high number of students also choose depression. There is obviously, it seems obvious, but here was a lot of data to validate that these are real issues for people. There are, so everything that, that Dr. Fuchsman just said, I think is of course true, and he is an expert in this field. There, for me, there are tactical things that I think we can be advocating for, so like MCAS tests being delayed. Lighter loads on homework, things that sort of de-stress people, one less thing to worry about. My daughters are telling me that they're excited to go back to school, but also very nervous to go back to school because they've gotten really used to their cohort and getting more FaceTime with their teachers. And that's really wonderful. So there, there's a lot of like hot and cold. And we have to be mindful of everybody's needs. And I think, like Shai said, there are some students who are going to jump right back in, and there are some parents who are really excited because maybe they'll get some time freed up, either for their own personal well-being or to go back to work. But we have to make sure that we are keeping our finger on that pulse again, to repeat what I'd said before, to know that every student has what they, what they need. I am nervous and have been for months about what the stress levels we're going to go to. And I'm, I want to be cognizant of not overloading students or our teachers. The teachers have done incredible, incredible work, changing the way they do their whole job overnight, practically overnight a year ago. And now we're going to ask them to do it again, not quite overnight, but they're going to ask them to readjust. And we've heard from a lot of teachers on the school committee, we get emails from them and some come and speak at our meetings about the things that they're nervous about. And we have to be mindful of that as well. And, you know, and support Dr. Nolan and the school administration to make sure that they have what they need to, in terms of budget and policy, to provide for their schools and for the students and for all of us. Thanks. I don't know if that was two minutes or less.
Thank you. Lastly, Mrs. Brunel.
Thank you. And I'd like to tie this back to the very first question we received about how I would interact, balance between my family's needs and the whole district's needs. Because again, that to me goes back to what is the role of a school committee member? And so I think that anyone that comes onto the school committee will for sure bring their professional expertise. But the role of the school committee is actually not there to be the professionals. We are there to listen to the administration and to listen to the community and then be a bridge. And, and so in this case, my, I would take a simple approach. I would say to the administration, what is your plan? Once the plan was in place, I would say, how is it going? And I would like to know how it's going in data and by various populations, teachers, students, parents, subgroups of students, subgroups of teachers, different levels, elementary, middle school, high school. I'd like to know how it's going. I'd like to do the follow-through that I think is essential for a school committee member. And finally, I would listen. As a parent, I'm, I'm watching this stuff go on and I'm listening to my kids and to my kids' friends. And sure, this is going to be an enormous transition. But as a school committee member, my role would not be that, you know, to come up with the plan, but it would indeed be to support the administration with their plane, plan, and make sure that we are following through on it.
Thank you.
All right, just a reminder of the two-minute time limit before my next question. My question is, many other students and I walk to school daily during the winter. The sidewalks are rarely clear, resulting in me walking on the road for much of my commute. Along with this, costs for parking spot at the high school are high. And for many students who drive to the school, as well as large fees for students who take the bus to school. What do you plan on doing to ease students' ability and accessibility to get to school? And first, I'd like to pose this to Ms. Brunel.
Thank you, Nate. I know you walk a lot all over town, not just to school. So I appreciate all the things you do with it, with the trails too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is actually a wonderful question to talk about town government in general, because the school committee obviously has no jurisdiction over the sidewalks. However, school committee should absolutely have relationships across town government, should be working with the Safety and Transportation Committee and also with town meeting members. I can't, I can completely, you know, I think you might know where I live, but we live on a cut through to the high school, and it is frankly dangerous sometimes when I'm watching students walk down my street and, and towards the high school. Not to mention the little kids who are not even three feet tall, that often the snowbanks are, become taller than the little kids who are walking to Johnson. So this is an essential question, and this is where the community, the community, this is why meaningful community input is important, not just to the school committee, but across our town government. And then that we have leaders who are then working together also about our budget. Our town budget is one pot that we share. So if we are able to actually make sure that every department in our town has what they need, including the schools, then that would be a way to approach things like clearing the snow over sidewalk, you know, from sidewalks. So, you know, it's, it's, it's not a specific thing that the school committee could do, do anything about, but it's absolutely something our relationships could have an influence on.
And to Mr. Brand, the same question on accessibility.
Yeah, so like Ms. Brunel said, the, we are limited in our jurisdiction. I can't, I, as much as I would like to take my shovel and go and deal with all the sidewalks, it is something we hear about quite a bit and something that we do advocate for as best we can with whomever it is, whether it's going to meetings or sending emails to members of the select board or calling the Department of Transportation, whatever we have to do to help, we're, I'm willing to do that. The, when it comes to things like fees, so for instance, just recently, there was somebody sent us a question asking if there were going to be the same limitation on how many people had parking passes for the high school, right? They, anybody who has a parking pass is going to be able to, they're, they're given more and their, their people will be able to park now. When we raised the bus fee and the parking fee, was it two, two years ago at this point? It was the first time that that had happened in, I want to say 10 years or something like that. The bus fees hadn't been raised in quite a while. The reason we had to raise the fees, the reason why that conversation came up and what we chose, we thought was fair, was because we were in a tough budget situation with the town. And we have to figure, we had to figure out ways to generate some more revenue, and we thought these fees haven't changed in a year compared to what other districts were charging. We thought it was fair. Now, there is assistance available for people who need it, right? No one is going to be put in a situation where they can't get to school. We're going to make sure that that can happen, because they can't afford to get a bus fee, or they don't have a car. Now, would it be great for me and for the environment if people sometimes, instead of the four people who live on the same street, all driving their own cars? If not in COVID, when we can't, you know, when maybe carpooling is not as easy. But if they could carpool, would that be better for the environment? Would that create fewer, a smaller need for, for, for parking permits? Of course, that would be great. But, you know, a lot of students like to drive and some, some actually do both. They have a bus pass and a car, because they share a car. We have to make sure that people can get to school and that ideally, people aren't really worrying about that. But you're right, the sidewalks in particular, in certain parts of the town, really do need a lot of focus. And we certainly, as a school committee, and even people who aren't on the school committee, can always be advocating to help there.
And lastly, to Mr. Fuchsman, I'd pose the same question on accessibility and commuting to school.
So I, I think that is part of the school committee's purview. I mean, we are responsible for the education of all of our students. And that includes making sure that you're able to safely get to school. That is part of what we need to make sure that we do. Now, like my two previous fellow candidates said, we can't necessarily, you know, we can't go and shovel the sidewalks ourselves. But government is about working together, and that's exactly what I began, my, my, my first answer was about developing relationships and how I have developed those relationships with people in a select board, FinCom, town meeting, but also different departments, you know, knowing, you know, who to talk to, the police department, the Department of Public Works, Department of Health, you know, how do we work together to figure out what are the challenges as a community? And how do we solve them? You're raising a really good one, which is transportation. You know, students have to get to school, people have to get to work. I mean, we all need to make sure that we're, that we have a town that functions properly, that our sidewalks are clear, that our roads are safe, that, you know, if you drive to, to school, that you're able to do so, you know, on a snowy day without having to worry about, you know, the road not being in the right conditions. And, and that, that requires collaboration between all of us, all the agencies. And as part of the school committee, you want to make sure, and we have been as a school committee, as school committee members, all of us, including myself, building those relationships. I know who to talk to at the DPW. I know who to talk to at the, in the police department, you know, when, if and when we need to do those things. In fact, I got to be on the reopening committee to plan for how we're going to get to school, how we're going to educate our kids this year. And we worked, it was, it was a great committee, not only of school administrators and teachers and psychologists and administration, but also we have people from the DPW and we have people from the police department, and we all work together on these challenges. So I would say the first thing is we need to identify what are exactly are the challenges, including, you know, specifically like what are the sidewalks we need to work on? Or what are the issues around parking? And then we need to bring the right people to the table and know how to do that well, even during a pandemic. And then figure out how to problem solve together, so that we're, we're solving these challenges together. So, so that, that's how I would go about dealing with that specific issue, and that's how it'd be, I'd go about dealing with any issue that requires collaboration beyond just the school committee.
Thank you. My next question is one about the student population in schools. So native student population is growing at a massive rate. Schools are being filled beyond capacity. Even new buildings like Natick High School and Kennedy Middle School will be beyond capacity in a few years. What can be done to mitigate this without further burdening the taxpayers? And especially what will happen with Johnson Elementary, as I know Ms. Brunel, that's a big part of your campaign. So I'll let you answer first.
So I wouldn't say that Johnson's a big part of my campaign. I, I would say that it is, was definitely the thing that activated me in the spring when Johnson was put on a list along with sports and theater in order for the school committee to make the cuts that they needed to make if the revenue was going to be where, and where we were projecting it to be. And at that time, we reached out to theater and like theater and sports parents, and we built a coalition to fight the cuts against the schools and try to come up with different solutions and encourage the school committee to come up with different solutions. So Johnson aside, right, this idea of enrollment is always an important question about, for any school district. Now, the high school, obviously, you guys have walked through the hallways in the middle of class changes. It's like a sea of people, and obviously, the high school is over, is over capacity. So something needs to be done with that. And I think that the district has correctly identified that in the next, at, by the end of the next three years, there will be a bubble there that will absolutely have to be addressed. And there's some solution, there's a planning, a space committee right now that's meeting to deal with that. The space study, I will say, is being done in a way that does not involve the entire community in the way that I think it should be. And I have said that from the outset. I'm part of that committee. And I've said at the outset that this is a clear case where I think the community should be involved from the very start, because this is going to require potentially redistricting, potentially closing a school, potentially changing different programs and moving programs across the district. And so that's why I think the community should be involved in this. That's how I think we deal with the taxpayer, or work with the taxpayer as well, because we have a responsibility to our taxpayers. And that responsibility is to show in a clear and transparent way, this is what we need to do, and this is why, and this is how we plan to do it. And I would love to build some more of that transparency for our taxpayers in this town.
And to Mr. Fuchsman, the same question about school capacity.
So let me answer a couple of elements of your question. Number one is, how do we deal with space? As Ms. Brunel said, we have a space study task force. We had a consultant architecture firm that is specialized in schools come and provide, do a study to, to help us better understand what are the efficiencies and inefficiencies of the current use of space. And that information is coming to a task force, which will make recommendations, and we will make decisions by understanding, first of all, what is our enrollment patterns look like? Understanding what is the current space look like and what are the, what are options for using the current space? And then also, what are, what are the recommendations they have for any additional capital projects? And then how do we, and what can we afford to do? You know, so for example, expanding the next elementary school, like Memorial. So those are all things that we're constantly looking at and are being closely watched for, for years and, and looking ahead for years to come. So we're constantly making sure that our schools are well-used, the space is well-used, and students feel, and teachers feel comfortable in the classrooms. It's a, it's a challenge. It's, it's all, it's a challenge for any district, right? Because you can't just pop up a new building just because a few students enrolled. You know, these are long-term projects. You have to be looking at long-term trends, and it's hard to predict those. I also want to take issue to the issue, to the, this aspect that we as a school committee is not, are not responsive to the community. I think that's a narrative that keeps be coming up. It's simply not true. We meet every other week, Monday afternoon, evenings, there's this, there's a link, people can come and participate when they want. We have an email, schoolcommittee@naticpts.org. I have not seen a single email come into our inbox that has not been responded to. We do engage the community. I engage the community. Each one of us engages the community. I know it's a nice narrative that sounds great for a campaign, but the reality is, we are constantly working with the community. That's why so many community members support the school committee and the work that we do. So, and we're, we'll continue to do that. In terms of Johnson, you know, we worked really hard as a school committee to make sure that we didn't have to make any of the cuts that were proposed to us. And we succeeded. Johnson is open. Every extracurricular activity today is going on. We were able to find the funding. We worked with our town partners. We worked with the teachers' union. We were able to get them to forego a 1% cost of living adjustment, which we then bring, we brought them back when we got more funding. We, as a school committee, did amazing work to be able to keep everything going on despite the difficult budget season. It's a nice narrative to say we didn't do a good job, but we did. That's why Johnson is open. And now I have said, I'm not going to commit that we will know, we won't close another school in the future, because we might have to. Because the school committee, sometimes those are difficult decisions you make. What I've committed myself to do though, is if we ever have to close a school, I'll make sure there's a long-term plan for how we transition the students and the families to a new community, because that community as part of a school is so important. I'll make, I will not vote to close a school unless it's a good transition plan. Thanks.
And lastly, the same question posed to Mr. Brand.
So it's a really interesting problem. When the high school was built, the size that was chosen for it was based on what the projections were at the time. When the new Kennedy was built, it was based on projections on the time. I think it, it can support up to 1,000 students, and it's probably a long ways away before we have that many. These are really, there's a double-edged sword to living in a great town like Natick, right? And we've all seen all these new housing developments that are popping up. And there's a lot of work to get more affordable housing in town, so more families can come. And the more families that come, the more students there are for our schools. This is just, this is the good that comes, you know, there's a good and bad part, right? We, the more kids come here now. During COVID, we saw a number of kids and families decide to take their students out of school. We are expecting, every summer, this happens, we get a spike. Families that move to town, or they've changed from private to public or anything like that. Projecting enrollment is really, really tricky. I'm the school committee representative on Dr. Nolan's, the superintendent's space study work group. And I, I would also like to disagree with Ms. Brunel in the, in this sense. It is actually a very public process. You can't have the whole town gather for a brainstorming session to get things started. We are certainly going to include plenty of community feedback. It's going to be a long process, but we have a lot of problems to deal with. So one of the tactical things that we will eventually discuss, and there have been no decisions made. That's what this process is about. That's why this, this space study work group has representatives from all the school councils in all the schools, as well as members of the finance committee, people from the town administrator's office, a lot of different representatives. One of the things that we're going to have to discuss is the preschool. The preschool takes up a significant amount of space in the high school. So this is one way to potentially, to potentially solve the bubble, enrollment bubble that's coming up in the seventh grade right now, right? If we can figure out a good place to put the preschool, that creates more space in the high school. So these are the kinds of things that we're working on. And I agree with Dr. Fuchsman. And I agree with, with Ms. Brunel as well, in the sense that we do need to involve community in all of these things, but we can't do it harshly. Last year, we were in a really tough spot. We were given numbers by the town, a $4 million budget gap that we had to figure out. And that requires tough conversations. We have to look at all of the options, right? We don't want anybody to feel stressed or anxious about it, of course. And we were fortunate enough to find the funding that we needed, so that none of those cuts had to happen. But tough conversations are part of the process. I love the Johnson School. My kids went to Memorial, but I love the community aspect of that school. That unfortunately can't be the only factor into the decisions we make. I look forward to continuing the conversation. We have a meeting next week with the space study work group. There'll be subsequent meetings. Eventually, that stuff will come to the full school committee. There will be more surveys. There will be more public conversation. I look forward to all of that. Like we've said before, the more perspectives, the more data you can get, the better informed you'll be, the better decisions we'll make together.
So thank you, Mr. Brand. You have a student here, Ben Shar Weiner, who does have a question for you all.
Thank you. In middle school, as of 2019, seventh and eighth graders were both given Chromebooks that they could take home in the one-to-one laptop program. Thank you. In middle school, as of 2019, seventh and eighth graders were both given Chromebooks that they could take home in the one-to-one laptop program. Afterlife returns to normal, do you see fifth or sixth graders eventually being given computers too? I'll start with Dr. Fuchsman.
Thank you. So one of the amazing things that our district did several years ago, before I was involved, so I'm not taking any credit for it, but it is a great decision. Was to begin that one-to-one program so that every student has a computer, beginning with high school. And we slowly did move down the grades from a high school then to middle school. Um, and we were able to build a big arsenal of devices, whether it's Chromebooks or, or MacBooks. And none of us, knowing that pandemic was on its way, because none of us could predict it. We're so fortunate that as a district, we did that. Because when we shut down the schools and when we were forced to shut down the schools by the state, not by our own choice. We were able to within months, I'm sorry, within weeks. Make sure every single student from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade had a device, one way or another. Today, while we're still in pandemic conditions, every single student in Natick has access to a computer, if not at home, if not their own. From the, the, the district, we provide those, those computers. As a result, we are one of the few districts that can actually say that we have really high engagement student levels during virtual learning. Whether it's hybrid or virtual, but during the virtual period of the hybrid, we are one of the, we have, if you compare us to other districts across the state. We're one of the highest when it comes to student engagement, because every student has access to technology. That is something that we did, that was, that we don't get enough credit for. And again, this began way before me, but as a district, we have to, to be proud of Natick as a public school system, regardless of which candidate you support. That we have that technology, that we have, we made those investments in technology. To your specific question, can I see that going down? Can we kind of keep giving more and more students computers? Yes, absolutely. I think that is a direction that we're heading. That was the plan, I think, several years ago, when we began with the high school to eventually kind of make ourselves down to, to every student. We now know whether it's a pandemic or whatever, you know, after this pandemic, we're going to completely reinvent learning. We'll have to. Um, and I think technology is going to continue to be an important part of that. And I think that will definitely make sure that every student has access to technology.
Ms. Brunel.
Thank you, Ben. And if I go over two minutes, please feel free to interrupt me, okay? So, and if I, if I may, I'm just going to take the first 30 seconds of my answer to just tailor back to the last answer. About the narrative that I might be using in my campaign about the school committee not taking enough community input. So what I hear from my two challengers is that you can come to us as a school committee member. If I'm on the board, you can email me, you can come to my meetings, you can come to us. What I don't see enough of from our school committee is in fact, creating the town forums, creating the situations where other people are brought in along. On the space, on the space study, right now it's a superintendent space study. And it was very particularly decided about who would be on that committee, because they were supposedly elected members of our school councils. Most of our school council members right now are volunteers. Elections did not have, have not had to happen because there's not many people running for the positions. That said, those positions, so that's, that's getting particular people to the table. That's not opening a dialogue for anybody, residents across the town to come. So the type of communication that I'm looking for is a relational communication that starts from the bottom and then builds up. It's totally a different dynamic than what we have now in Natick. It's, it's, it's chaotic. It's, it is grassroots. It is, you know, deeply personal. And I think our district could benefit from inviting more people to the table in more, in more organic ways. To your specific question about the computers, what I want to say is that this is why the A in my platform is so important. We have to align our budgets to our priorities. So if we want a one-to-one program in Natick, we need to name that and we need to do it systematically over the years. Not with money that we find at the end of the year, or not with money that is not being carefully planned. It has to be that we have decided to go forward and not just for the actual devices, but also for the technicians to support those devices. Currently in Natick, we have four technicians to support over 10,000 devices. That is not sustainable. We have amazing equipment in our theater, in our theaters and in our, in our, you know, probably the equipment you guys are going to use to edit this. We don't have the technicians in the budget to support the devices. So we can't just think of one-to-one, we have to think about it in the ecosystem of our entire budget. And then also how we support those devices.
Uh, Mr. Brand.
Part of the challenge, and I, prior, prior to my time on the school committee and prior to my time on the finance committee. I sat on something called the Information Systems Advisory Board, which is where I met Dennis Roach, who's the director of IT for the, the district. I don't know if any of you know him. I have been hearing about the, the one-to-one program for years now. And one, and I am very much supportive of dropping the grade level. We do need to support that though, to get more kids. We all, I'm sure you all know, more and more homework is done online now. Not every family has a laptop for every kid or has internet access. Part of like what Dr. Fuchsman was saying, we didn't just lend out laptops to people. We gave Wi-Fi access points to people so they get internet at home, right? We have to support all of that. We do have one new technician in the budget for this coming year. It's still not enough. When, when Dennis Roach came to this, to the school committee to present his IT budget for the upcoming year. We talked about it at the meeting, how it would be great to have more technicians. Unfortunately, and this goes back to, you know, to the sidewalk conversation we were having. We live in an ecosystem where there is a finite amount of money, unfortunately. And we have to make tough choices. So I've said this before and I would say it again, my field, my expertise is in technology, of course. I would love more devices and more students to have them. But I also think, I happen to think, if you made me choose, it's more important to prioritize math specialists this year, for instance, which we are doing. Right? We're still adding, we're still adding one IT technician. I actually have the budget, the hires here. There is a theater tech teacher position that we are trying to figure out ways if we can get that in this year as well. Because I was a theater kid, I loved that theater stuff and there are a lot of students who want to take advantage of that. One of the ways that we have been able to increase the one-to-one computer program system here is, I don't know if any of you have them. But we have moved from MacBooks to Chromebooks. Chromebooks are of course much less expensive. So that's one way that we're able to buy more devices as the MacBooks age out. As they get too old to be sustainable, we replace them with Chromebooks, which we can do. It's like two or three Chromebooks for MacBook. So it's much more sustainable to do that from a cost perspective. We do need to, it's not enough to just get them in the door, we have to then be able to support them. And our IT staff, as somebody who works in that field, they work incredibly hard and we need to support them as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ben. So our next question is that so often students feel that they, that they're neglected out of the decision-making process in school. Uh, and especially with school reopenings coming up with, where really everyone has their own opinion. What do you guys think, how much input should students have in the process of reopening and just in the process in general? And Mr. Brand, you can start.
I'm going to put a timer on. I think that we need to, at the very least, know how students, at the very least, we have to know how students are feeling. We have to know how they're doing so that we can be informed. Now, I'm not a professional educator. And it's not my job as a member of the school committee to micromanage Dr. Nolan or any of the administrators. It's without, it's not within the purview of the school committee to, to handle what happens inside the schools in terms of a lot of that sort of day-to-day operation. That being said, I do think it's important for us to know, not just high school students. And it's a lot harder when you get to elementary school students and middle school students to get how they're really feeling. Of course, as you get older and more mature, you get more articulate about these types of things. But like Dr. Nolan recently held a, a forum with fifth and sixth graders at Kennedy. To talk about the new principal that is going to get hired at Kennedy, what they were looking for in a principal. And I think programs like that, opportunities like that really help to inform the direction of the, of the district. And we should continue to do that all, all times. I can't, I, I wouldn't honestly say that I think that we should let any students make all the decisions. I think that's, you know, most of you are not education professionals either. But I do think that your feelings and your opinions, and you live it, those are really important perspectives that we should certainly consider as we make any kind of decision. I don't want anybody to ever feel left out of the process. One minute and 29 seconds.
Great. Perfect. Ms. Brunel, please go ahead.
Do you want to make this competition matter about how fast we can answer the question?
You can take the whole two minutes.
I think the key here is that the feeling is feeling neglected, right? And I, um, I think that's important to notice, for me to note that I have attended almost every school committee member, or sorry, every school committee meeting over the last year. And I have yet to meet the student representatives from the high school. Because every meeting virtually, at the, the students are either not there because of obviously other commitments. Or they are there at the beginning and are not introduced until the very end of the agenda. Where at 10:45 at night, they've already left the meeting. So in my mind, there is already an unbelievably underutilized process, again, going back to best practices for a school committee. There are every, every school committee across the nation has student representatives on their board. Some states, they actually are voting members, which has been an issue actually during school reopenings. In Natick, we don't even hear from our student representatives at our school committee meeting. So that is the very first thing that I would like to say. Then I would wonder if you as student representative, if people, the student body knew who your representatives were. So that you could take things to them and that those concerns could be represented at the school committee meetings. So that's, that's what I would like to say. In terms of the input though, um, I think that Matt is right that you have the lived experience. And so one of the key things for any good administrator, any leader, is that they are listening always to the people for whom it affects the most. And that they are also sharing with you limitations that we have. And so if there is a desire that you might have, that school starts at nine o'clock in the morning. While we might be able to listen to that, I hope that the administration is able to say to you with good reason. I understand that that would be better for your sleep schedules, but this is why we cannot do that and give you back a good answer that's reasonable.
Thank you. And Dr. Fuchsman.
Yeah, so I think the first thing to understand is as a district, a district is a very complex system. Where multiple decisions are being made at all ti, at all times and at different levels. So there's what the school committee gets to decide, there's what the superintendent gets to decide, there's what the principal gets to decide in your school. And then there's decisions that teachers make every day and there's decisions that you all make every day as students. When you're running for school committee, you have to understand what is the purview of the school committee? What is the decisions we make? And what are the decisions we don't make that fall to other people? And you have to be respectful of that process. Um, and, and that's the one thing that I had to learn at the beginning is to say, what is it that I'm responsible for? And, uh, you know, what are the decisions I need to make? Uh, and what are the decisions I don't, I, I should respect others in letting them make. In addition to that, as a school committee member, I am a elected representative of the entire community. It is my responsibility, it is my responsibility to engage with the community. And I have done that. I constantly engage, you know, I know special education well because it's something that I care about. I'm constantly talking to parents and students who have on IEPs and 504s. I get that information directly from parents and from students. I care about English language learners. I used to be one, when I was in third grade, I walked into a school not speaking a word of English. I care about that population. I've engaged with that population. I've even had virtual coffees in Spanish so that I can hear from, you know, people speaking their own language, their perspective. I have spoken to students, um, you know, so I, I don't want to name students because, for confidentiality purposes. But I have taken that as my responsibility. So that when I sit on school committee and I make decisions within my purview, I bring that entire, um, uh, community perspectives. And so that is a responsibility I have taken very seriously to engage with students and to engage with parents and to engage with non-parents, who are people who don't have kids in the system. Um, and I have brought that to the, to my decision-making process. You know, that's how democracy works. You know, you don't see, you know, the entire country in, in the capital, you know, when Congress is making decisions. You see congresspeople there. But those congress, it's the responsibility of the congresspeople to go back to their districts and listen to their communities. And if they don't, they don't get reelected. That's how, that's, that's how, why I'm running. I'm running because I want to continue to engage with the community. Okay, sorry. Don't put the timer, sorry.
Yes, no, um, and I think we have someone to speak for Friedman, he's in here, right?
Yep. Yep. So our next question is going to be delivered by Max Friedman. He is a member of Politics Club. So go ahead, Max.
Uh, hello guys, thank you for having me. And I was just going to ask, uh, with teachers continuing to become more and more proficient in online learning. Do you think that our school district should continue to have snow days as we did in the past?
Uh, Mr. Brand, you can go ahead first.
Okay, um, yes, I do think we should have snow days. I, I think there is, I remember being at home and thinking, as a kid, looking out the window and it's snowing. And then my parents would come in and be like, no school. I think that those mental health breaks, I mean, it was fun as a kid. But I think that the breaks that people get are really important, not just the students, but the teachers. They work so hard. And I think you're right, there, there are lots of opportunities for online learning outside of the normal day. But I don't think that we, we've done all right with that during the pandemic, of course. But I think that those snow breaks are sort of, or snow days are like a rite of passage. They're part of, of the fabric of school. I, I loved it as a student. I know students now love it. We have requirements on how much learning needs to happen. And we meet all of those requirements. I don't think we need to sacrifice the fun of, of snow days in order to take, we can take advantage of online learning in plenty of ways. If we don't need to, you know, substitute out snow days in order to do that. I'm going to keep it really quick. That was a minute and six. It's a good question though.
Yes.
I will, I'll take, I'll take a few more seconds of my two minutes. And I'll say, if we made a decision to get rid of snow days, I would like for Max Friedman to be on the school committee and make that vote. And get the 10,000 emails that we're going to get complaining about it right afterwards. But it's a good question.
Uh, Mr. Fuchsman, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to put a timer this time. Um, I agree with, with, with Mr. Brand. I mean, I think that, um, there's something exciting about a snow day and it is a nice break. My sense is that there, it doesn't have to be a, either snow day with no school at all or full school. But there can be creative solutions so that when it is a snow day, kids will stay home. Um, and having some sort of assignment that takes just a few minutes, but still allow for that general break, I think is a good idea. But you know, I think that is the kind of decision that does require community input. You know, it's, it reminds me of the decision, another decision, I don't know if you guys, anyone of you wants to ask about is the, the changing of schedule, the changing, the whole concern around sleep hours. Uh, which was also a very intense, very interesting conversation we began last year. We got so much input for every opinion, this is what you don't know, when, what you get to learn when you're at school committee. Every, for, on any issue, you have every single opinion you can think of getting, coming at you. We get tons of emails. And you know, and the sleeping issue was, was, was amazing, how many different opinions this one community can have and how intense people feel about it. I think this question will, will probably be the same way, like Matt, what Mr. Brand was suggesting, we'll get a lot of feedback. Um, and I think ultimately we have to make a decision that is best for our community. But I, I think there's probably some sort of creative solution to balance those two things. Thirty-six seconds left.
So my answer would be, we go back to the role of the school committee and also best practices. It's not, as a school committee, you know, we don't get to decide how the school takes their time on learning. We ask the administration what their plan is and then we do the follow-through. There could be a policy on snow days. And this is again, where I feel like another underutilized resource in our school committee are our subcommittees. So you could very well form a subcommittee, or you could use the policy subcommittee to understand snow days. Now unfortunately, in our legalistic environment, as much as I would love to give you a Calvin and Hobbes answer. And say like, yes, snow days should always happen, right? If, if I'm going to take my role seriously, then I'm going to say that we need to have a policy on this. And we need to go through the policy subcommittee. And in that way, we need to engage community members and welcome those 10,000 emails. And understand that there's also data to support these things. We also have to look across our populations. We have students that travel from Boston to our school. We have students who, parents do not have the resources to create a snow day for them, like a, a snow day with hot chocolate and, and sledding all day long, right? So we have to understand our entire district and how any decision that we would make about a snow day would affect it. And that would take place in something like the subcommittee of the policy.
Sounds great. Um, so we are in the homestretch here, folks, so far, so good. And I just have a few questions for you all. So it's sort of clear that there are some students who have not thrived right now under these circumstances, right? I mean, for some of our students being at home is just not suitable. How will you sort of help those students who have not thrived, you know, in the future? And. And we'll start with Matt.
Start with Matt. So I think the first thing is to identify what it is, every, to everybody, if they're thriving or not, is doing so for different reasons. So the the first thing we need to do is make sure that we, for each individual student, figure out why they're not thriving. And then that is what informs, that data informs for that individual what our plan is to recover, to help them recover academically now. Some students might not be thriving because at the beginning of COVID, they chose their their remote learning only, and that hasn't been great for them. Or some students are doing that and it's been wonderful. Some students are doing hybrid and the switching back and forth each week doesn't work for them, or some it does. For some students who have special education needs. They're not getting the exact same program that they would have, the same services they would have been getting before. We, each student is different. We need to make sure that we identify for each one. What their course is, what the services that we would provide. Right? And we've started providing this year during COVID more services to more students. We are not, we can't stop providing services to them just because COVID is ending at some point. Right? We have to continue to work with them using our budget. And using the resources that we can provide to build programs for individualized programs for each student. To make sure that they can recover academically, part of the the math specialists, different counselors that are being added through grants. Like lots of different things that we're adding are for that, but now we have to work in and get the pulse of our parents and our students. And talk with our teachers and guidance counselors to figure out individual plans for each student. Thanks.
Sure. And the same question for Shai.
So the whole process of bringing kids, students back to school is is very important, and it's important that we get it right. And for that reason, the process for planning that has already began. We're not just kind of waiting for students to show up to school. In fact, we even began the process of of planning for bringing students back even before the Massachusetts Commissioner required us to bring elementary school kids back April fifth. And I'm going to build a lot on what Mr. Brand said because it's just the right answer. And that is, we. We need to expect that students will be in different points, right? Not all students learn the same, you know, I think Connor, that was kind of already, you you brought it up in your own question, you kind of suggesting that. Different students are thriving, others are not. So it's important to understand, to assess students where they're at. On all different domains. So you know, math literacy, but also social emotional skills, you know. Are there, is it, is it issue anxiety or is it issue that they didn't kind of, they don't really understand, they didn't learn the math skills in the virtual setting? So to really understand, hone in on what are the challenges students are having, and then to make sure that they're supported. We, the the process for making sure we have the resources and the staff to do that has already started in the budgeting process and the planning process. We know this was the priority that we put directly into the budget process to make sure that we have the math aids, that we have the counselors. That we have the right assessments all in place and that we're ready to get students back to school assessed. Having struggles or challenges identified and to make sure that we have the supports in place. So I I'm confident that we are already on a really good place to support that process.
Sure. Thank you. Shai, let's now hear. From Catherine.
Thank you, Connor. So first, I want to say that we have students that have not thrived in Natick for decades. This is not a COVID thing. There are always students who are not thriving, and that is incumbent upon the administration and any leader in town to dive into why they're not thriving. And so in a big picture way of answering this question, I think we need to think about expanding what we measure in our district. Specifically in Natick, I was shocked a year ago when I opened up. Our return on investment thing that gets sent out from the district to the entire community about, look at what we do in our schools. And one of the callouts in there was listing the number of students that applied to Ivy League schools. I think at the time was five, and the number of students that that got into Ivy League schools, and that was three. And I thought, I said to my husband at the time, if this is how we measure success in Natick, then we're failing. Because out of a class of 400 kids, if five go to Ivy League, if that's how we measure it, we are literally failing to students. I don't think that's how most people measure success in Natick. I think we would need to measure how students expand their learning, how students make progress in all of the different ways. We need to communicate that to the students, we need to communicate it to the teachers, and we need to communicate it to our administration. That that, this is what we're looking for. We are looking for kids that are thriving in all of the profile of the graduate ways. And when we call out Ivy League students, and I am so proud of you if you are one of them. You have taken your genetic ability and worked your butt off, might most likely to get where you will end up at that Ivy League. So it's not taking that away from you. But for us to measure that in our return on investment disappoints me as a parent. There's many other things we need to be measuring. Now, in terms of COVID, how we measure things also matters to me. I was in a meeting this year. With a psychologist in the meeting for our council, a school council meeting. And we talked about the remote learners and how to access, find out how those children were thriving or not, because they weren't in front of a teacher every day in a physical sense. The the idea came out that we were going to send out a Google form at an elementary level to have them access. Give like a response to how they were doing. And the psychologist said, I don't recommend that. That's not going to be something that the children are going to be able at an elementary level to respond to. We still sent out that Google form. We added pictures to it, but instead of touch, making touch, a touch point with each one of those students. And figuring out how to do that, we send the Google form.
Yeah. So just a few more questions for you guys. And, you know, sort of on topic. Sort of not on topic, I should say. If there is one thing that you could change, you know, in our schools or in our town. What is that thing? And starting in the reverse order?
Sorry, Connor, when you said reverse order, does that mean? I missed that part.
Yes.
One thing, that's, that's a good question because I'm, I like to get in there and be a problem solver. But if, one thing right now, and that this is why I'm running for the school committee, and this is why I think we need change now. Our school committee is not using best practices. And we are not consistently using, we are under utilizing tools that we have to be leaders in our schools. And so it's not sexy. It's a, I am a process person. I would like us to be using the best practices in terms of process and how we make our decisions. That comes down to things like aligning our budget to our priorities, backing every decision with data. Data that is also shared at public meetings and that is disaggregated by different groups of populations of students. And then finally, that we are creating policy with meaningful community involvement. Not just community that shows up to a three hour long school committee meeting, but community that has been solicited. Because we in fact care about the things that our community has to say.
Sure. And then we will hear from Shai.
So first of all, I'll just, just in response, I'll say, I'm actually proud of the work that as a school committee we have done during this pandemic. Conditions, we worked very hard with parents, with teachers, with administrators, with town partners. We elicited feedback through surveys. We, Dr. Nolan had about four or five different forums just in September alone. Each of them had school committee members on there. We have gone through, we, we, we worked really hard, all of us together. To bring about the best education that we could under these conditions. And so I'm proud of it. If there's one thing I will change to go back to your original question, it's this issue of inclusion. Because if there's one thing that I've heard from students and parents complain about is the biggest issue. Is that students, for various reasons, don't feel comfortable being who they want, who they are. That includes people, kids because of their political views, who feel like their political views might put them, get negative consequences from teachers. LGBTQ students, students of color, students of special needs. We need to create a welcoming environment in every single school. That doesn't mean that we work with the kids who are outside, who are being excluded to help them cope with being excluded. That means we work with the entire community to create inclusion, so no one feels excluded. That is the one thing that I think we need to do much better. There's many things we need to solve. There's a lot of challenges ahead, but to me, that's one that I want to be focusing on among many.
And from Matt?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question and one that I think about quite a bit. I, I am part of the the policy, I'm the chair of the Policy Review Subcommittee. And I am very, very glad that we are at the beginning, just at the beginning. We haven't adopted anything. We haven't created any new policy on microaggression yet. But I am, we're right at the beginning of that, and I frankly wish we would have started sooner. And like, so if to change something, if I could go back in time and start sooner, that would have been, I think that would be great. I think to piggyback on what what Dr. Fuchsman was talking about. More work sooner, but I'm glad, you know, I'm thankful we're here now doing this work, but more work sooner about equity, inclusion, all of those types of things. It would be, would be great. I'm really excited to hear about, I don't know if any of you are going, are planning to take that Social Justice in America class next year? Or if you've heard about it, but like classes like that, that are are important conversations that will also have a digital component. So like a broad group of students can and community members can access that content. I think things like that are really important. It's, there's never enough that we could be doing, and it's always later than we would have wanted. So I would change and go back and and start earlier if I could. But I can't. So moving forward, we'll do better.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Okay, so this is our last really loaded question. So hang in there. So teachers, a lot of teachers have voiced their concerns with us as well. And this has really been student focused, but one of the, one of the, some of the feedback we got from teachers was around their workload. Some teachers feel they're given too little time to grade and give meaningful feedback to their students. So what can be helped, what can be done to help teachers give the most to their students in regard to their academic? Preparation. And Ms. Mr. Fuchsman, please go ahead.
Thank you. So again, this is an area that I've been focusing on professionally because it goes beyond just Natick, it goes into really the entire country. We are hearing a lot. And again, it's one of those things that the pandemic has brought forth. The teachers are struggling. But when you start talking to teachers, they'll say, yeah, but it wasn't just the, I mean, yeah, the pandemic too, but it was like that before. We need to really make sure that we are using, utilizing the strengths of every single teacher, that every single teacher who comes to Natick. Is really able to bring their creativity, their innovation, their, their passion for for their subject and really engage with students. One of the things I'm really proud of that Natick has done well, and I think it's important, is that focusing on the relationship between students and teachers. I don't know if you guys know this, but the DSS, the Massachusetts Department of Education recently put forth a document. Highlighting some models of effective relationship building in Natick was cited as as one great model because you've done it well. I think one of the things that we're working now with DSS, the Department of Education and other experts across the state. Is translating that into teacher to teacher relationship. Mapping out how can teachers support each other? That doesn't oftentimes happen enough. There's not enough time in their schedules to collaborate. Collaboration is key in any industry. Somehow we missed it for education. We need to help teachers collaborate more. When they collaborate, they can be more creative, they can be, they can help each other troubleshoot. And ultimately, that, that, that supportive environment of colleague to colleague supportive environment reduces also the stress and makes people feel more comfortable.
Great, thank you. Mr. Brand, go ahead.
Yet another good question. It's a complicated one. I think part of what defines a teacher's day. Like the minute to minute, what they're going to do, how much time they get to spend on different things, is part of the union negotiations that we have with the teachers. So part, and it's important to us that we have things in place to allow for consistency with communication. So parents all get to check in now. You, maybe you're not aware of this, or maybe you are. At the elementary school level, teachers have, you know, parent teacher meetings regularly. Right? And then you go to middle school as a parent, and all of a sudden, sort of that doesn't happen. We've had these conversations at school committee meetings in the past. Is there a way to have some form of parent teacher conferences as the students get older? This is really complicated to do because the schedules, as you get older, middle school and high school, schedules are much more complex. Teachers, like you said to the question, have a much larger group of students that they have to deal with. So we want to make sure that we have supports in place for teachers to consistently communicate in a way that's comfortable for them, that we're not adding way more work. We don't want to say, you're already working so hard, and now we need you to spend an extra two hours a week sending emails to parents, right? But we do want to make sure we provide, we have good learning groups. So like to what Dr. Fuchsman was saying, where teachers get together and have professional development together. Where they feel supported. I actually, and I think it's safe to say this now, was part of the Kennedy Middle School Principal Search Committee. Like the interview committee for the, for a number of finalists that are now whittled down. The question that I asked in that interview had to do with how do you build cohesion between yourself and the staff? Right? That's important for the staff to feel, and this is what I apply in my professional life. It's important for the staff to feel similar to students, safe in their workplace. That's where it starts. If they feel like they can do their job and they're supported and they're safe. Then that will make a happier workplace and it will provide them with better opportunities.
Thank you. And Ms. Bernal, go ahead.
Thank you. So one of the pieces, the ABC is backing every decision with data is the B in my platform. And this is, it comes out right here because our, we talked about enrollment earlier. If the enrollment is changing, right? We know the bubble is coming up to the seventh, from the seven, sixth graders and fifth graders. That also means that enrollment is possibly shifting in the elementary school. We've never seen those numbers discussed explicitly at a school committee meeting recently. But that would mean that our high school teachers, as the enrollment goes into the high school. Have we changed the numbers of teachers that we have at the high school? Have we changed the the amount of case, the caseload that they have per student? I also feel this about our guidance counselors, you know, more and more students meet, like the college application process is complex. In addition to the social emotional needs that they go to the guidance counselors for. Do we have enough guidance counselors at the high school? We're constantly talking about class size at the elementary school level. I wonder if we've talked about it enough at the high school level and if we've supported our teachers. We also talk a lot at the elementary level about this collaborate, collaboration, collaboration model. And to the point about inclusivity, especially with special needs. Collaborating, using your professional teacher time, and I know this because I'm a former teacher. When you're able to sit with a special educator, and I'm the general ed teacher. If I'm able to sit with them in a concentrated time and actually collaborate with that person. So that I can coordinate the student services with either their one-on-one teacher or with any of the special ed services they're receiving. I'm able to give a better education to that student. So we do that at the elementary level at some level. I don't know to how many minutes, and these are the data questions I'd be asking about. How often do our teachers collaborate? What's the minutes? Not only at the elementary level, but also at the middle and the high school level. Those, this is why backing every decision with data matters. And why we need to look at across our district from elementary to high school and then see how each level can influence the other one.
Sure. So folks, you've done a great job so far, and this is the very end. I have one more thing I want to ask you guys, though. So a big part of being a leader in our school and in our town is seeing things from that zoomed out view, right? So with that, I just would like to ask you who you voted for last fall and why? And starting with Matt and then Shai.
So I would normally not answer that question because I actually think it's a pretty private thing. But this particular case, I will. Joe Biden, I voted for Joe Biden. I, he was not who I voted for in the primary. I was an Elizabeth Warren guy. And I actually wrote about this. I write a blog for my kids. I'm a, I write a daddy blog. And I have done this for years. I wrote about this the day after the election was called, like I did four years ago. About how important I think it is to respect the presidency. Right? And how even after Donald Trump won the election four years in 2016, 2017, when he was inaugurated. I thought it important to at least honor the the office of the president. Right? And do our very best to work to move forward. I write about like, we're going to move forward now. We're going to do our best to, we live in, he is my president. We're going to work together for the sake of my kids, for the sake of all of the kids and all of everybody, right? And despite my best efforts and despite his worst. It just wasn't happening. I just, it became so hard. And it wasn't, there was never a question, of course, for me. But when I happily, proudly voted for Joe Biden. And and if you look at the number of people who voted in Natick in November, it was like. it was like, of the voting, of people who were voting age, it was like 95, some crazy number, 95% of the people who could vote, voted, which was great. I think it's really important to, we don't have to agree, you know, Shai and Catherine and I, we don't have to agree with each other on any of these things, but I'm certain that we can respect each other. That's a huge part of this, and that is not something that was modeled nationally. It was really hard to spend four years teaching my daughters how to be respectful of somebody with that behavior that Donald Trump was putting out. And I don't, my, I will tell you this now, my in-laws are, were, are, were Trump supporters, right? We had plenty of healthy conversations about it. That's all right. We're allowed to do that. But at the end of the day, I was, I was a Joe Biden supporter in November.
Sure. To Shai and then to Catherine.
So first of all, I'm proud to say I voted in the presidential election this past fall for the first time ever because I became a citizen, because I couldn't before, not because I didn't want to, but I became a citizen in April 2017. And it was an honor to participate in the democratic process period. When I did, I did vote for Joe Biden as well. And I did so for similar reasons. I, I am very respectful, and I have great respect for many Democrats and many Republicans. In fact, I currently work very closely with a woman who used to be governor of this state before you guys were all born, Jane Swift. We've had great conversations. She actually gave birth while she was governor to, to, to twins who are now in college. So just to give you a sense of where you fit in with her, her office. And I've also worked very closely with the state president, as the Senate President, Karen Spilka, both of, both women who are leaders, one Democrat and Republican, and have great respect for, for them and for many other politicians. But I didn't have that respect, to be honest, for, for Donald Trump. I thought that multiple things he said and has done undermined our democracy and disrespected the presidency. I was personally offended early on in his campaign last 2016 when he made fun of a reporter with disabilities, as a parent of a child with disabilities. That hit me in a very personal way. I don't want to raise my daughter in a world in which people make fun of her or anyone else because of disabilities, and to see that from a presidential candidate and later president was just very difficult and very painful for me to see. And so when I had the first opportunity as a citizen to cast a vote, I voted for Joe Biden, and I am happy I did.
Sure, thank you, Shai. And last but not least, hearing from Ms. Burnell. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. And as I'm challenging these two incumbents, I believe in the challenger, and I voted for Joe Biden, but I also voted for Kamala Harris, and that's very important to me, too. Additionally, I voted for Rebecca Roush in our, in our state government. It's not just the presidential election in the fall that I was voting for. It was the state and the local elections that matter to me a lot. And I hope that all of you continue this political interest and that you, you take it into your lives. When I was in college, I was an, I always had an absentee vote. And my college roommates used to yell at me because I would stuff our mailbox full of all of the flyers because you will get more mail in your life if you register as an absentee voter because people know you're getting a ballot and they know that they can target you. Voting matters. It matters. That's why I'm running. I think that everyone should always have a choice. And although it's been recommended to me that I do not run this year, that I wait, I said, that's not our democracy. Anyone should always be able to step forward and suggest that they are a good and quality candidate. And that's why I'm running, and that's also why I was proud to vote for the people I voted for in the fall.
Great. Thank you all for your answers. So thank you to the candidates and to our student participants. Please get out to vote on March 30th. And again, you can find information about all of the candidates, including the select board candidates, and how and where to vote with the link in our description or by scanning the QR code. Thank you and have a good night.